And that's the last one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Brad.
That's it. Okay, so moving on from our tax project. We have a lot of things that are going on.
Yes, we do.
It's gonna be exciting. Our road reservicing status report.
Good morning. Mark Garing again, Public Works, here to present paving program update. Our, but as many of you probably recall, our paving program last year got cut short when our paving contractor left the area. So we had $560,000 that rolled over into 1415 with the $864,000 that you'd given us, given us a budget there of $1.4 million. These are the roads that Better Roads completed just before they left town. And these are what we completed now with the new contractor, Ajax Paving. We, the big projects were Marion and Olympia Avenue. I'm sure you've seen those and ride them regularly. We have these projects scheduled for 2015. $457,000 of that has been encumbered. And when we take that off, what we build from Better Roads and Ajax last year, the $457,000 that's encumbered this year, we had a budget of $560,000. And we've identified additional $500,000 in roads that will be paved this year of that 500 spent of the $560,000. Yes, sir?
Councilmember Kiesling wants to get mod done.
So noted.
Oh, I was on the list, wasn't I?
It's on.
I see, I see mod on the list from Henry.
Well, it's on the list. If it was, if it went from the second to the last bullet, I know it's not in any particular order, which probably wouldn't have made the comment if that was the first bullet.
I see. I see. But we have now an available budget of $560,000, and these particular streets would cost approximately $500,000.
$500,000, yes.
Is that correct? So really, we're looking at maybe an additional $60,000.
Yes, and as those, as we get closer, we write work orders for each one. We haven't had any surprises where the prices are going up, but we, so we could add additional streets to it.
Yes, Tom.
Are we bidding these phases out, or are we under contract based on some type of unit, unit price per?
We're under contract price per ton. So we write work orders sow's as we're, as we get to an area. We like to give the contractor a week's work when he comes to town. He doesn't like to come to town to pave one street. So we give him a week's work. We had a problem with bobbling a couple of weeks ago. As we were getting ready to pave it, a water line broke at the same time, and we weren't able to pave it, which we had just milled the road. Maybe the vibrations from the milling caused the water line break, maybe just coincidence. But the paver left town without being able to finish that road. He originally told us he wouldn't be back for a month to get that road paved because he would do it in the next cycle. The weather and crew availability and all, he had an opening last Friday, I believe it was, a week ago, and came into town, paved one road, and moved on from there, so.
So he made some of our residents very happy.
We had a few folks that were very unhappy with the situation.
We had a complaint there from, from one of the residents. We all got a copy of it, but he now thinks that we all walk on water, so.
Great.
I hope so. Right?
This company has done a great job.
That probably is still debatable.
I haven't yet tried that, but.
This company has done a great job.
They have.
They have done a really good job.
Yes.
I'm really happy with them.
The quickness of them doing Marion and Olympia was so noticeable. I mean, that, obviously, we drive those streets. Yes, Nancy?
I, you know, I really enjoy it when I get an email from a resident, "Where is my street on the list?" And it's on the, you know, the list. Somehow, I know I keep saying this, I wish we had a database like they do for the canals, the seawalls, where a resident could go find out, "Well, where is my street on, on the pecking order," or whatever. And I know that you keep track of things, and you, you do a very diligent job. Really, the only way for a resident to find out is to either email us and we talk to you, or it seems to be a laborious task, so.
Is that a possibility?
And I know that residents, what I hear from residents is, and I know you said every street gets something every 10 years. I have residents who said, "I've lived here 15 years, and nobody's touched my street." And so, you know, these are the, I'm in the middle, so if there's some way that we could make things more transparent.
Well, I hate to do this, but I'm gonna lay this one on IT's shoulders. We produced maps last year that we wanted to put out on the web. In the past, we were able to contact Charlotte County GIS, and they had space to give us that little slot in the GIS system for our seawalls. We asked them for our paving, and they said, "No slots left. We couldn't include it on the county's website." We don't have a system internally that will handle the size of these maps. IT worked on it for a good while, tried a couple of different software packages, and we couldn't get it. I've heard talk of new GIS applications and things, so. We have the data. We'd be glad to push it out to whoever wants to see it, but we don't have the technology at this point to deliver it.
We do have a five-year plan, though, that we update every year, and we publish that.
Well, yeah, I realize that, but some of these things aren't even on the five-year, and.
That's right. A lot of streets aren't on the five-year.
And so it really becomes a, to these residents, and I know when I'm out, and I'll just use Brentstone Isles as an example, because I live there, if I'm out on my bicycle, I can go, as I told you, Howard, when we met, I can go on Macedonia up near Monaco, and it's not bad. But I go out at the end of it, and it's very, very bumpy, because it's just mostly pebble. I mean, there's a little, a lot of the, what holds everything together is kind of gone.
Deteriorating.
It's deteriorating, and so it's very bumpy and that kind of thing. And so the residents, they complain about that. And yet, it's out at the end of a street where it doesn't get a lot of traffic, it's not a high, you know, so anyway.
That, that database would be a worthy project to pursue if we can ever make that happen.
So we assume Brad is listening.
He's listening.
He's listening.
All right, Brad, thank you.
It'll be done in two weeks.
Yes, Mark?
The, one special project in the paving program that we're getting ready to do is a Durant Street between Olympia and Virginia. We'll be taking up all the brick pavers on that street. Utilities will be coming in and putting in new, new utility lines. We'll then come back and re-brick the area. We're gonna add new curbing. That curbing is in very bad shape, most of it. And we'll be adding a sidewalk on the west side. We've met with most of the residents out there. One has been elusive thus far, and we haven't met with them, but it's not going through his front yard. It's actually, he fronts on the next street over Gil or Gil, I believe, so it's in his backyard. We're not anticipating big problems there. We have spoke to the three residents who we will be putting a sidewalk in their front yard, and they're all quite appreciative of it. We do have one tree that will be coming down. We've spoke to the, both property owners, each side of the tree, and they're fine with the tree coming down. Urban Design's looked at the tree, and it's, it's in very bad shape, anyway. We expect that work to begin the first week of March with the removal of the bricks. Again, we've notified each of the residents, and at the completion of the project, we're expecting to have a block party sort of event where we invite all the community out to help us put the bricks back down. That date will be announced as we get a little closer in our planning.
Thank you. Yes, Nancy?
I know some residents commented to me that they would really like to make sure that the re-bricking is, is in as cool of weather as possible. So the earlier you can get this done, the better.
Yes.
So I'm passing the word along from them.
Sounds good.
And that's all I have on the paving program. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any other questions, comments? Just delighted that Ajax has been moving very efficiently.
Thank you.
Need to thank them. Thank you, Mark. All right, we'll be moving now to our South County Overlay District update. Who is handling this? Joan?
For the record, Urban Design, Joan LeBeau, and staff, the county staff actually presented to their Board of County Commissioners at a workshop, and got fairly well reviews from, from the board, and they were asked to continue to move on. I was asked to do an update just to clue you in on what happened at that workshop, and then the changes that we're, we're still looking at. There, there are three sections in the overlay district that were under, that had a little bit of discrepancy in it, but all is moving forward with it. The changes are minor, and here's what they are. Under the signage, there is freestanding preliminary signs that are gonna be 100-square-foot sign area versus the city's requirement of 64 square feet. Given the size of the commercial property in the county, this seemed very reasonable to allow the 100 square feet. The single parcel freestanding sign separation that is called out, in the county, again, it's 100 feet versus 300 feet in the city. Again, it's reasonable, given the size differences in those properties, that they'll, that those signs will be fronting. The county window signs that are allowed only allow up to 25% of each of the panes. We allow a 33% coverage on that, that pane. So the county is a bit more restrictive in that aspect. There were minimal differences in the landscaping. They based theirs on measurement calculations, height, planting of the tree, the area delineation, linear footage, and the total square footage of the properties that they're looking at. Not an issue for staff. We were in agreement with that. Then looking under the architectural provisions, the parking is required to be on the side or rear of commercial properties within our city. The county is calling out to the maximum extent practical, and it will require them to be a little bit more diligent when they're reviewing their projects.
Joan, what does that mean?
It means that they go to the maximum extent. We usually look at minimums. And so we, we like to have our parking in the rear and on the side, and the county will be looking at that, that maximum percentage of parking in, in that area.
So are they gonna be doing the back and the side, or is it still gonna be in the front?
To David Hilston, Urban Design, it'll be to the practical extent that they can. What they're saying is, you're going to start with the side and the rear.
Okay.
And then if the site conditions are such, we're gonna allow you to move over.
Okay.
And again, given the suburban context versus the urban, that was.
Okay, thank you.
Then the differences in the architectural rhythm changes as, you know, the size of the building. Again, the city requires a 300-foot difference, and where we require relief changes in our building, the county is actually calling out 250 feet of a change. So we'll look at those columns instead of being 350 feet, they, 300 feet wide, there would be one at 250-foot change. So again, no issues with that. A 50-foot difference really is, is fine. And then the last one is that we, our, our city requires eight architectural treatments per our buildings. The county requires six. So again, a minimum change, not necessarily major. The next steps are, the workshop has already occurred for the BCC, the Board of County Commissioners, and then they have notified their property owners, and they are preparing for the meeting that will be held February 11th, right here at the Event Center. And it will start at 5:30, I believe, and they'll take public input at that time. Once that's completed, they'll have public hearings, and they'll advertise for those as well.
Comments, questions?
Do you have, Joan, do you happen to have the, the map that shows the extent of the overlay that you could put up there by any chance?
Well, I think it's a giant leap forward.
Mm-hmm. I think now we just need to see follow-through.
Been there before.
That's.
Yes, Nancy?
I, I know we have some people from the South County Coalition here, and I'd like to request the South County Coalition, I know you don't have a meeting before then, but if you can make sure that all of your member organizations know that, of the meeting next Wednesday, it's very, because I know when, we went through this before in 2010, and Team Pontagorda organized the public meetings, and we held the public meetings. We had a huge representation from a lot of organizations in the South County when I met at Brentstone Presbyterian Church. It would be wonderful if a lot of those people could show up as well. And the same for like Brentstone Isles and Brentstone Meadows and other organizations.
I believe that Don has basically sent out an email to all the South County Coalition members, so hopefully they will.
Just double-check on that.
Yeah, that'd be good.
This is a huge leap forward. It only took us 10 years to get here, and I'd like to acknowledge the county commissioners for continuing to work with us on this, and their staffs as well. I think they and city staff have done a really great job. Just like to point out, this is for architectural features, landscaping, and signage only. There is no obligation here that, for the city to extend services out, out to this area, just so we are all clear on that. And it does go out all the way as far as Interstate 75. So it's, it's a big area. It would be wonderful if there, there could, there would appear to be a seamless transition between the city and the county, and that's been the goal for a long time.
Do we want any kind of formal recognition? Letter to the county? I mean, we send them letters when we have problems. Should we send a note of appreciation to them and their staff at this time?
I think we should wait and see how the stakeholders even knows.
Yes, Nancy.
Looking, reading through all of it, I had the same interests as Tom, since I've been involved in working on this for so many years, and seeing that there were things in it like no pole signs, no billboards. I think that'll take away some of the showstoppers when we approach individual businesses on annexing into the city, where they say, gee, if my sign blows down, I can't, well, you won't be able to reconstruct it after, if the overlay goes through as planned. So that really is a very positive.
Agreed. Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Yes?
Good morning. Jerry Waxler, and I'm not speaking on behalf of anybody or as an attorney, but as a 30-year resident of Charlotte County. I support the overlay. I think that if more of Charlotte County looked like the city of Pontagorda, we would be better off all the way around. But I would ask both the Coalition members, the Brent, the Brentstone Coalition members, and the cities, you approach this, they're about to go into a critical phase, which is the stakeholders. Very often, aesthetic concerns can, can, I don't wanna say clash, but, but can be sometimes at odds with the actual needs of businesses. This is something, my, my husband owns and operates Morton's Ace Hardware, and, which was destroyed in the hurricane. And when we rebuilt, we rebuilt to what at the time were the county's new standards. And one of the things we found particularly with regard to parking and parking in the rear, when you have a business like his that gets semi-trucks that make deliveries, that parking in the rear often conflicts with the movement of those trucks making deliveries and creates a safety issue. It also creates difficulty with regard, when you're not a business that is actually fronting, like an urban business, like you have in your downtown, but a larger business, the rear entry only, or having a rear entry and a front entry also sometimes creates security problems. So it just asks that you take into consideration the input from the stakeholders and the business holders, business owners. They too recognize that improving the aesthetic quality in the long run helps their business, but it also has to work within the actual, real business owner's concerns in their operating their business. So I just would ask that you keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay. Moving on now to the use of city seal by organizations.
We, the city has a, City Council has authorized the use of the city seal for the block party years and years ago, and for the recent city of Pontagorda, it wasn't the, it's a city golf championship. It wasn't the city doing the event. We don't do events. We've done two events, the 125th anniversary, and we've done the extreme makeover. And part of the criteria that the council has used at that time are these nonprofits, and does it benefit the city as a whole? That's some of the criteria we've used. We've had the issue raised, and as to whether or not it was appropriate to allow the use of the city seal. And if so, how are we going to deal with other organizations that may come and want to use the city seal? The city attorney and the public risk management group has advised us that we either not use the city seal, allow it, or come up with criteria, which we can make an attempt at. Could be difficult, because there will always be exceptions. We can give it a stab, or we can retain the status quo and deal with it on a case-by-case basis, knowing that we have used our own internal criteria before. Or we can just ban it in the future. Councilmember Kiesling's comment is, support status quo. The group using the seal now, and that's the golf tournament, did exactly what they were supposed to do, and we were all on board, meaning City Council, when the initial request was made. So we have three options: status quo, using the limited criteria that we have used in the past; come up with some new criteria, and then bring it in front of you; or just not allow it anymore.
Tom?
Well, if the city steel, seal has reached the status that its use can help people, I would, I would support continuing to find a way to do that. In the past, we've eliminated in-kind support to various charities. We've eliminated funding to various charities, and I'm sure that it's taken a considerable toll. So if there's a way that the use of the city seal can help, I would support it.
Nancy? When I reflected on this, and particularly the golf tournament, I thought of my, the town in which I was born and raised, I won't say hometown, because this is now my hometown. And they have a Parks and Rec department. It's not a big city, but they have a Parks and Rec department that holds the annual city amateur, which then the people can go into the, to the USGA, to the US, not the US Open, but, yeah, it is US Open. And so anyway, these golf courses are owned by the municipality, and, and the Parks and Rec runs the, the event. So that's much different than what we have. But I got to thinking about it here, and I thought, if we had a Parks and Rec department, this might be something that they would do. So I thought, you know, of us as a community, as a city and municipality, if we had a department like that, would it, would we be participating in some manner of speaking? And, and I think the answer to me was yes. And there might be to other events, like what Tom mentions, where we might be participating in some degree. And so I don't have a problem with the status quo, and it's, my litmus test is if we had a, a department that would support things, whether it would be a marketing department or a Parks and Rec, we would be doing it anyway.
Ken?
So you, I, I think that if we allow someone to use it, I, I think we're, we're gonna have all kinds of requests now, people coming wanting to use the city seal. I agree with you, Tom. If the seal can be used to, for charities and raising money, and I think that's a good thing, but I think we have to be prepared that we're gonna get a lot of requests to use the seal. And also, to the attorney, are we, are we giving the wrong idea that we're, you know, everything that happens at that event, you know, this is a city event also, or?
You know, the, from, from my perspective and the risk manager's perspective, as soon as you put the seal, you know, on anything, we become a potential target for anybody that gets hurt, is somehow.
Right.
Injured, or, not injured, but, but has a problem with the, the operation of the event, and, which is why with this, with respect to the golf tournament, I, you know, I requested that they get insurance and make sure the city's covered. But, you know, if there's, if there's alcohol being served at the event, you know, and we have no control over that, and, I mean, there's just any kinds of things that could happen when you open the door that way. The other thing is too, you know, how, how are we going to differentiate between the various organizations that may wanna use the seal? And, and if we, if we suggest that one organization not be allowed to do it because they don't promote the positive image of the city, you know, as, as somebody might perceive it, does that run afoul of whatever First Amendment rights that they might have? I mean, that's just, it's, it's a very tough issue. And, and obviously, the difference between the scenario you presented is that if the city is, is running it.
Right.
Then they have better control over what's gonna happen at the, at the event.
Yeah. So I guess I just feel like we shouldn't do it at all. It's my opinion.
If we don't do it at all, we now have one organization at least that's assuming that there's going to be a third annual City of Pontagorda Golf Tournament. Okay, so that would be next.
No, they can do the tournament.
They can do the tournament.
And let me point, and let me point out, the, the name, City of Pontagorda, is a geographic
name that we have no ownership of.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
So if they choose to call it the City of Pont-
They can still call it, though.
Yeah, as long as they don't use the seal, we, we don't open the door to the kind of liability that otherwise might be there.
That's all we have control over.
Tom?
I would just like to see us look, look into it. And as I said before, if there's a potential that the use of the seal, the status of the seal can, can help people, and we're not asking the taxpayers to contribute funding, we should, I think we should look into it to see if it's feasible, possible.
Would you be satisfied, then, with going with the status quo, and we take requests as they might come before council?
I would.
Rather than trying to establish criteria?
I would, yes.
Because I think once we establish criteria, then it's still, again.
But if we don't establish criteria, and like what David said, he recommended that we have the insurance policy and that, and that type of thing, then we have to keep track of what we say to everyone, because the next person that came, comes in may not have, may have something a little different. They'll say, "Well, you just didn't like us," or "You didn't like our event," or "You didn't like something." And so you have to establish criteria, even if you say you're going to not establish criteria, because then it's, well, why, why didn't, why not us?
Well, if, if as David suggests, that they can use, obviously, the City of Pontagorda can still be a part of whatever, and usually, any groups that do want some support or recognition do come before us, perhaps then maybe we should not incorporate or allow, quote, "the seal" to be used. If the seal is the, I don't see how the seal is different than us participating in some other way, but.
Well, the seal is, is, could be, is a trademarkable.
Okay.
Seal of approval.
Yeah, and they put it on their publicity, their flyers, that kind of thing, so it's, that's how, you know, it does get used, and there is an implied liability, I think, as you suggest, so.
Based on what I just heard, I'm, I'm hearing that we need our fifth council member here, unless somebody decides to change one way or another.
I don't know. I mean, where are you, Nancy?
I was in favor of the status quo, but, you know, I'm kind of hearing this liability issue. I think it needs to be, I do understand what you're saying.
All right, so shall we then just postpone this discussion to another time?
We, we can, but I recall what David has told us many times, 500 bucks buys you a lawsuit, and so, you know, we, we.
It's probably gone up a little bit, but.
I, I'm not so wor, to be honest, I'm not worried about the lawsuit. I mean, I'll, I'll be honest about that. I'm, what I'm worried about is the perception of why me, or why not me, and why did they get to use it?
Mm-huh.
I mean, it's going to happen, and what is the answer to that?
One of the things that you might consider, remember when we were requested to authorize banners for the, the airshow? And we came up with, we had the same sort of discussion, and, and the criteria that we came up with, I think, at least for, as a working hypothesis, was that if the event drew, or was anticipated to draw X thousands of people, that might be something that would be worthy of, of special accommodation. And, and maybe with respect to the seal itself. If you wanted to be able to assist those things that would have a substantial, or potentially substantial impact beneficial upon the city from a number of people that would be coming in, that might be a defensible criteria to be using, to use with respect to your decision concerning the seal.
Say criteria, that would rule out the golf tournament.
Right. And, and then you're going to have, you have the smaller, like the golf tournament, and that are raising funds for local charities, and the seal would be helping them, more than a huge event that's already drawing thousands of people and have, has a ton of support. So it's really more of a.
If you could quantify how much of a fundraiser it was, that would be another, you know, something that's quantifiable, I think, is what I'm looking for in the way of a criteria.
I just don't, I, I don't want us to have to say, I mean, unless you want to just say, anybody who can use it who wants to.
I'm wondering if there's any precedent by any city or municipality that we could look for, and. look for and...
We can certainly check around.
I think that would be helpful. And why don't we postpone this then?
Yeah, I think...
I don't, there isn't any urgent need. The issue did come up, but there's no urgent need for us to make any decision at this time. No?
Yep, I agree.
Okay. And staff can then identify some other, what other cities are doing with regards to their seal. And it may be, again, to our advantage just to say, no use of the seal. You know, as cities, as different events want some support, then we can identify what that support might be. Okay? All right, we'll move on. We are now coming on recommendations from city officers.
No.
City manager? Did I miss something?
Oh, that's right, yeah. The Shell Creek Watershed's under the city attorney. Okay.
Do you have anything, sir?
No.
City attorney?
Well, yes, but briefly. I was asked to prepare an outline of the procedure that Charlotte County is now embarked on to get the amendments to the comprehensive plan, particularly the ones that were affecting the half-mile buffer of Shell Creek. Identify for you what that procedure is, the points of entry, of the city's involvement, if they chose to be involved in some fashion. I've done that. The thing that I would bring to your attention is that the first point of intervention with respect to the process would be for the city, within 30 days of last Tuesday, which I think is the date that the county commission adopted the amendment, you know, at the first reading, first hearing, would be for the city to prepare written comments and submit those written comments to the various reviewing agencies that are by statute required to submit their comments back to Charlotte County, as well as the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. That way, there is a requirement for the Charlotte County Commission to consider the comments, as well as the state to consider the comments. And hopefully, if you have any comments that you want to have considered, those various reviewing agencies, principally, you know, the Water Management District, the Department of Environmental Protection, the Regional Planning Agency, who would be submitting comments, would have an opportunity to take our comments into consideration when they make their own.
This was their first hearing?
Correct.
Correct. So they are going to have a second hearing?
They will.
Is there a possibility? One of the things I guess I'm concerned about is, I don't want us to get into confrontational issue with our county commissioners. This issue, obviously, is critically important for our watershed. Is there, again, I appreciated the suggestion that you've made earlier about working with us to develop language that might, again, fit our purposes, as well as the commercial mining. I agree that there's probably not the commercial miners that are having the impact on our watershed. It's probably other farmers, et cetera. If there's something that we can do in terms of their comp plan amendment, they would accept at the second hearing, would that, is that a possibility?
That we could work with them?
Rather than doing something and saying, okay, now we're in a confrontational mode and we're going to all these different agencies and, you know, indicating that we're against what they're doing? Because that's not necessarily...
I mean, that's not what our letter said, either.
No.
Well, if they were going to make a change at the second hearing after all of the comments were received by the reviewing agencies...
Oh, would they come after the reviewing agencies?
The second hearing does come after the reviewing agency. So my concern would be that if there was a change that they made that wasn't reviewed previously, it might require it to go back up. This really is the least expensive and perhaps most effective opportunity for you to make comments.
Okay.
Ultimately, if the county commission adopts something that is substantially adverse to the city's interests, we could initiate a formal petition, petition for formal administrative hearing to challenge their adoption of the comp plan as being contrary to what they're required to consider. So, you know, I understand what your concern is, but there are other points, but not others that are as effective as the one present.
All right, so I was not clear. I thought that they would have the second hearing and then they go to the reviewing agencies.
No, no, no. What they've done is they've had their hearing, they've transmitted it to Tallahassee for review and comments, and then it's after those are all then received by the commission that they will either modify the ordinance consistent with those comments or not, then they adopt the ordinance, which is then reviewed again for consistency by the state.
Okay, so that's where we are then, in terms of that. Yes, Nancy?
I agree with your comment relative to what was suggested about the unintended consequences if we were to put a ban on the rest of the mining, and all of a sudden, people get, you know, mine really quickly and do everything anyway. You know, I'm concerned about that as well. So I think, you know, I've always been in favor of a collaborative approach to things that, where we all, it create a win-win situation. So I'm just wondering what, how you feel about that as our city attorney, to have some kind of a collaborative approach that creates a win-win. We get where we want to be as much as possible.
I think our primary concern is having an opportunity to review...
Yes.
What is hap...
What is happening in terms of the mining, in terms of perhaps agricultural issues, et cetera.
Well, one of the things that, I made a list, if we were going to submit comments, I made a list of things that I would think would be helpful to the city to have before they formulated its official letter. And this is not an exhaustive list, but it's a couple of things, a few things that I came up with just on, as I was sitting here. I think we'd certainly need to have copies of all the mines that have permits, either expired or active, within a half-mile of Shell Creek. Perhaps like obtain whatever enforcement records, if any, there had been over the period of the operation of those facilities, as the state would have presumably maintained It would be helpful to get the backup materials that the Charlotte County Commission considered when the half-mile buffer was originally adopted in 2011, to understand what the purpose of the buffer was and see if anything has changed since then. And also, it would be helpful to get a copy of the materials that were submitted to the Board of County Commissioners at the time of the consideration of the adoption of the currently proposed amendment. So we have a, you know, an understanding of whether there was any concerns about the necessity for the buffer that was originally created from a scientific perspective. I mean, I think the more information we have in that regard, the better we'll be able to understand how to address the amendment in our letter.
I have a question.
Yes, Tom?
Who do we rely on to make that evaluation?
Again, I think that would be our utilities director, I think, with Tom Jackson.
And I think he has a lot of this information, because I've...
Yeah, I've been talking with him. Jerry, appreciate your offer to assist, again, to take a look at how we might work together with regards to comments regarding this. Do you have any other suggestions based on what our attorney has said?
I wanted to make sure that the council understood what this amendment actually does. The ability to extend a permit is found actually in the county's excavation and mining ordinance, which was changed a couple of months ago. Though the ordinance allowed the extension, the comprehensive plan and the changes that they're proposing do not change the fact that there is this quarter-mile prohibition. There will be no new mines permitted within that quarter-mile, based on the language. What this does is it extended the vesting for those that are within, so that they do not have to come back in. In other words, most of these mines that are operating either do not have land use and the land use and zoning, that was kind of an after, you just have to get a permit, and then they changed and said, well, you have to get a land use change. Problem was, the land use change is not quasi-judicial, I'm sorry, then you have to get a rezoning. Rezoning was quasi-judicial and most of the mines were able to meet the criteria to show that they should be allowed to have the rezoning change. That wasn't far enough. They adopted the comprehensive plan change required as well, because comprehensive plan change is not quasi-judicial. And there was much more latitude to say no. Was another opportunity to say no to mines, even when they met the strict standards and so that there would not be a problem. The comprehensive plan requires that mines, basically says that after your permit has expired, you have to become consistent with a comp plan, which requires the land use and the zoning. Those existing mines, of course, cannot obtain the land use and the zoning, because it is prohibited under another provision of the comp plan. So the comp plan change simply extends the vesting. I don't know that the comments that you're seeking to propose go so much to the extension as goes to the vesting. To me, the better approach is to build in the things you want into the county's ordinance, which is what actually provides the steps and the provisions for granting extensions, regardless of whether they are, the vest, it doesn't say you can continue, or it says you can continue the ordinance and says you can only continue if. And I think it's those if that you want to have some say in and some ability to comment and review. So my suggestion was that we work on language for the ordinance, because I really think that's where your concern goes, much more so than to the comprehensive plan amendment itself.
Comments?
Depending upon what hat I'm wearing, if I'm wearing a hat as an advocate for the city trying to protect its watershed, I certainly have arguments to counter the arguments that are being presented by a representative of the mine. I would just simply say that having protections in the comprehensive plan and having protections in the permitting ordinance is where we ultimately want to be. Taking a position that may be somewhat different than what the county commission is taking with respect to the vesting issue and whether or not an existing mine should be allowed to expand, to renew, is a philosophy that we have the ability to take a position different than the county commission regarding that. You can, you can take a position that's more stringent with respect to the vesting issue than the county can. And I'll just simply say that irrespective of the individual regulations with respect to mining, the buffer typically is your backstop. You know, that's how you, how you ultimately protect a resource. Because regulations can change over time. And I'm disheartened to hear that if the mines learned that they wouldn't be able to renew, then they would accelerate their utilization of the resource, which could typically lead to potential violations. A mine that is, has a mindset to do that is not a mine that we want to be in our watershed anyway.
Okay, so what is our...
I have a suggestion. I'm not sure how much information of the list that I just identified, we, staff has, that if you give staff the opportunity to acquire that information, review the information and see with respect to that information and compare it with what's presently being proposed, what is ultimately in the best interest of the city based on more of an informational base. We still have, if we review that information and prepare a letter to be submitted to the county commission, I think we could, that letter could be available for your approval by the next city council meeting, potentially.
And that would be in sufficient time then?
And that would get us within the 30 days that we would need to submit.
I mean, I think that that's a great idea. I did go to the UAB meeting and I did have the opportunity to see Gary's presentation that he presented at the UAB. And even Tom was there and Joan was there also. And with, with all the information I got and the information we got at the county commission, it didn't sound like this was a danger, that they have to follow all kinds of rules and they're being regulated in a lot of ways already. I thought our goal was that we wanted to be able to have a say, wanted to be able to, if things were happening or there were any type of, you know, problems out there. I mean, there, you know, there's a problem out there with someone that we have no control over at all. And it sounds like the county doesn't need, I mean, I know that SWF MUD does, but that those things have to happen. So I think the more information we have and we can feel comfortable with what we're actually looking at. I mean, these mines have been here, my, and this again, is just what I was hearing, if you guys heard something different. They've been there, they haven't really been operating at full capacity because of the recession that we've been through. So our concern was, now that things are picking up and they will be using them, because apparently from what I saw, these mines are close, and with all of the building going on, the material will be, have to be hauled from far away, you know, increasing cost and that type of thing. So we wanted to make sure that they, everything was going okay, once the mines were operating at full capacity. And when I saw Gary's film, I mean, you see all these redundant systems that the water, you know, is not being unfiltered and going into Shell Creek. I mean, I think there's a lot of information that when you put it all together, there's, you know, you see that there's a system in place. We just want a seat at the table? I mean, am I...
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Right. I mean, that's what I'm feeling.
And was the PowerPoint that you're referring to, is that the one that Ms. Waxley referred to making available to Westside Council, or is it a different one? Sorry?
She said it was available now.
Gary has it now, if you'd like to see it.
It's not that long.
Well, we could wait until the next meeting, I would think. We'll have more information to maybe evaluate the presentation as well.
Howard?
The presentation that Mr. Bain is going to give is exactly the reason why we want to have a say in the process. What he's going to present is justification on why the mine that he's going to talk about, in their eyes, has done a great job in its configuration and its operation and this and that. That's exactly why we want to have a say in the process when that extension comes around. Is it always going to be like that? I don't know. Is it always going to be operated like that? I don't know. We want to make sure that if that permit gets extended, we as a city feel comfortable that the protections are in place. That is what we're trying to accomplish.
Yes.
How we get there, well, that's what we're discussing. This is not about an individual piece of property. This is about the mining, the dirt mining industry and all the other activities going on in our watershed that may or may not have an impact. We don't know. We don't have all the answers. That's why we want to review. We want a part of the process.
Okay, so I guess what I would like to see is our staff to identify the materials that you feel that you need to have, to take a look at that, and to get us to the point where we get a seat at the table. And we'll prepare, and any letters that we would prepare focus specifically on that.
I think that's a staff task. I mean, I'll be very happy to take a look at what they do.
We know what we need to do in the next couple weeks to get it back for a discussion here, right?
Agreed.
So let's see. We've got to do this, we've got to put the road paving on the website.
No, I mean, I think there's a lot of information already that you mentioned here. I have heard in different meetings along the way. And, you know, we just have to protect our watershed and I'm sure that, I would hope that they did too. And it was also my understanding is that, as you said, Howard, it's that way now, but it's my understanding it has to be that way, that it can never, it cannot change as long as you're working out there. It's not just that way now, but that SWF MUD is constantly out there looking at these...
SWF MUD, constantly is too strong of a word. I wouldn't want, I... I wouldn't want, it's not like we have a representative from SWFMA out there on the daily mining, but they are subject to reviews, there are annual reports that are required to be submitted. And of course, you have the city constantly doing monitoring that lets you know immediately if there's some turbidity or some issues with their water. We fully support what you're stating here, and I hope, I wanted to make that clear. We, the three that I represent, and I think there are only six that are actually within the watershed, so I represent half of those, fully support and think that the city should have a seat at the table, mayor as you put it. And we are happy to work with you on that language, and I would like to say we would be happy to invite Deborah to join us if we have any meetings with staff to craft language that, so that they feel that the city is looking at the right things to give their input for that as well. Doesn't always happen, but we try and have in the past worked successfully with Deborah and the environmental community, and we'd be happy to give that a shot as well. We support you having a seat at the table and we're willing to work with you in whatever capacity to make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we good?
We will bring it back for an agenda item and we'll get on.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you, by the way.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your review. All right, we have recommendations from city officers. Our city clerk.
Yes, under boards and committees, we continue to have two vacancies for alternates on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board Committee. We don't have any quorum issues there, but we do have the two vacancies for alternates. Also under vacancies, we have an unexpired term now on the Pontegora Housing Authority. Under appointments, we have an unexpired term for an alternate on the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have four eligible applicants. Here are your voting forms, you're voting for one.
There's only four of us. There's a runoff. What was it tied?
Between Bowman and Delacorte. And if we have another time, our suggestions will wait till we have our fifth council member.
I think that might be, that might have to be.
This is also, it seems to be a write-in. What if we change the name?
Bowman and Delacorte are the two.
Okay, thank you, and I wanted to thank all of those that applied, and this is actually wonderful to have additional people that are running for our different positions. So thanks to everyone that has applied. Joan, do you want to give me the material that you have? We now have comments, thank you, policy and legislation. I would like to first just extend our sincere appreciation to Representative Ken Roberson. He has forwarded letters now to Representative Al Britton with regards to our funding for our RO project and also to the appropriations chair for funding for the memorial, the Vietnam Memorial. So I wanted to thank him for, again, taking that effort and for his leadership. There were a couple of things from the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. We had the joint meeting with Sarasota Manatee, and I forwarded to my colleagues on council the board for Manatee, Sarasota Manatee. There are 17 people on that Metropolitan Planning Organization board, and I know what it's like for five people, so I can imagine what it's like for 17. But the focus primarily for that meeting was on the, they were calling the Englewood Interstate Connector, but it's now being referred to as a regional river, river road interconnector. And Mr. Harrington is here, thank you for being here. This, again, is a priority as an evacuation route. Obviously Sarasota County feels the concern, as do we in Charlotte County, but with Manatee also, there might be concerns with regards to the priority that they would place on that as an evacuation route in terms of funding from FDOT. So the staff will be taking a look at the, both the number of lanes that will be or needs to be paved along that from six maybe to four. They'll also be looking at what is already purchased right of way, what's been done in design, construction, et cetera, and coming back again. This issue, and I, and Mr. Harrington, you could probably say, sell me, but I've been on the MPO for what, at least three years and sat in on for another one, and it's been on the agenda each time. So it is something that we continue to do. We work with Lee County for funding for Burnstour Road. Thank you, for Burnstour Road. And that did get additional funding this last year, again, I, we believe because of the joint effort between the two counties on that. So I wanted to call that to your attention. And also, we just got information from Mr. Harrington also that Governor Scott has announced funding from, for the Florida Department of Transportation. And for us, there's been 29.2 million to add lanes to reconstruct US 17 from DeSoto County line to CR 634. And so that's going to be the widening of 17 to four lanes from Poe County to Charlotte County. So that is funding there in terms of additional transportation funding. And then also 60 million to add lanes to reconstruct I-75 from Charlotte County line to Sumter Boulevard, so that missing link there on 75. So I thought you might be interested in those two things. And then we have from our staff member that we have been requested from France, from a journalist who's working on a TV documentary regarding changing climate threats on America, and they are doing, asking us for information about our climate change policies that we have in place. So we thought we should go to France and just see this documentary. I mean, we thought that that might be a good idea. But again, we are being recognized for all the good things that we're doing, so.
Very nice.
Appreciate, I think that that is a wonderful, again, recognition of what we are pursuing in our little slice of paradise here in Pontegora. All right, so now we have, Tom, did you want to take up on the next issue?
Sure. I will take it off with the recent annexation of the Loop. It now appears that the McQueen property could be contiguous to city property. And at a recent ribbon cutting, I mentioned that fact to Mr. McQueen and gave him extended an invitation for him to come and sit with us and see if he would be interested in an annexation process. Now, that was about three weeks ago, we haven't heard anything yet, and I don't know if we will, but you know, who knows when with the, if the OVA goes forward, the differences between county regulations and city regulations may be small enough and there may be some interest on, from a cost-saving standpoint, that this may come together at some point in time. I'm not, you know, we'll see. But I also wanted to point out, the only way to get the Cheney property, which has agreed to annex into the city, is through an annexation of the McQueen property. And I just wanted this all to be up to speed on that.
Now, have you, have you talked to Mr. McQueen?
I extended the invitation, I sent him a map, and I'm waiting to hear back.
Okay, very good. Very good.
I've had multiple conversations with Mr. McQueen personally, and each time has reiterated his stance of no. I don't like working with the city and I'm, no, I don't want to annex. And so he was pretty point-blank about it.
He just doesn't understand how nice we are.
Yeah, I know. I would say never say never. So Tom, go for it if it's something that I know other people that would like to be a part of the city and whose property is but his and are prepared, go talk to him. So in regard to annexation, I will say, I did get a phone call on Monday afternoon from Walmart, the land use attorney working with Walmart, who said that Mr. Mack in Bentonville has given her authorization to proceed to work up voluntary annexation agreement with the city of Pontegora. Now, hold, don't, hold your breath here. Howard has had a conversation with them. I said the first person you need to talk to is our city manager, and I talked with Howard, and of course, we had a little, at least this is a step in the right direction. So Howard, you want to give us an update?
Yeah, we talked late yesterday. We're going to send them a calendar of events, we'll send them the Goodyear annexation of documents, an example. We're going to send, they wanted some ideas on what the land use and zoning might be. So we need to send them that information, and Urban Design is working on that. I also requested that, there's a bunch of other properties waiting in the wings that would like to come in at the same time. That didn't get a rosy reception.
From Walmart?
Walmart. They may want to handle this on their own because when we involve the other properties, yeah, there's going to be a lot more administrative work, especially if there's four properties involved, and getting them all to agree, it's going to take a little more time. Walmart may not want to do that. The person from Walmart is also checking with Charlotte County to see what right...